So normally, we have honored people who are going to be honored in our board meeting to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but we have two honored guests today. So I'm going to go with the guy with the gun. So I, I'm so sorry, but Mel will take us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Full call.
Your time is up.
Here. 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 I'm here. Request a modification for approval of the agenda?
Yes, yesterday, we discussed the possibility of four modifications, one of which we were advised by the clerk after consultation with legal counsel, we couldn't do, and that was to actually cancel the call for hearing because it was on the 5th. We have to hold that hearing, but we don't necessarily, we have to at least await. So Item 1C is a letter of support for floodplains by design, dungeons, off-channel reservoir proposal. Item 1D is a letter of support for the Kool Creek Culver replacement project, and we ask to consider postponing Item 2A indefinitely, the agreement with David A. Siebelack and Chrissy Ann R. Siebelack.
I would like to leave Item 2A, the agreement with the Sieblacks, on the agenda for some additional discussion today.
So in second, the motion for the agenda modifications to include leaving Item 2A on the agenda?
So for the second, approve the modified agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Public comment for agenda items, or you can have the public permission to make comment on agenda items, we have a couple more presentations here in a moment.
So Linda Barcass, County Treasurer, courthouse. I just have two short points made today about the super-lack, not the acquisition of a public hearing that's still scheduled for July 5th. In my conversation yesterday with Commissioner Beach, after yesterday's work session, it seems, it may appear that perhaps the commissioners have not all seen the complaint, the underlying complaint that is resulting because of this settlement. So I want to make sure commissioners actually see the complaint. It seems to me if they haven't, it would be unconscionable to be advised of the proposed settlement without actually reading the legal documents, so I've got to guarantee sure that one gets a grievance with these technical issues. And I think that the reason why this is such an astounding complaint, and why this is being proposed for such a large settlement, is that it shows, apparently by settling it, he's admitting that the prosecuting attorney, Marv Pickles, knowingly, repeatedly, and wrongfully readacted my email, my opinion, from the public record, and to twist the land, apparently, he believed could have made a difference if he had had that opinion in his lawsuit to Selvus. And the second point I want to make is that considering the prosecuting attorney's self-interest in avoiding public accountability for settling for this complaint, settling for this complaint for readacted my opinion, I think it's unconscionable, unconscionable, confident of interest for him, or his defendants, to be advising you as to the merits of this case, the merits of this complaint.
Hold on, I'd like to say. Thank you. For the help commission to make comment on agenda items. See if anyone else. Set agenda.
Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of June 20th. Item 1B is approval of minutes for the week of June 20th. Item 1C is approval of a letter of support for floodplains by design, dungeons, off-channel reservoir proposal. And Item 1D is approval of a letter of support for Kool Creek Culver replacement project.
Move to approve the concerned agenda?
A second.
So move to a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports and presentations, so firstly, I'm here to recognize Mel Kemp, for over 26 years of service for Clowdon County, and we do have a frame etching, so Mel, come on up with the sheriff, and we'll get this presentation started. Very cool, but there's an addition, frame. So please, here's a service on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in Clowdon County, thank you. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Okay, thank you. Hang around, I'll get it. Well, we're going to officially retire Mel today. Before I do that, I would like to recognize in the audience here, I think we have six of our own retired folks. I first see Deputy Todd Yarns, Deputy retired, Deputy Yarns retired, I think, two weeks ago, effective the end of the month. Thank you. I see Sergeant Maunton Martin, Maunton, retired several years ago, putting him over thirty years, retired six years ago. Deputy Tom Reyes, got to recognize him, even though he's a retired deputy, he moved back and worked for the county, but he's still one of us. And I saw Under Sheriff Steve Snover, where are you? Thank you, welcome back. Under Sheriff Snover is a, moved back to Florida, now he's moved back here, welcome back. And finally, our own Under Sheriff, Ron Perrin, my own Under Sheriff. Ron, thank you. I miss me one. Thanks. And now the family. Peggy Kempf, the wife of Mel, your daughter Monica, welcome. There's son Steve who couldn't make it, but that's the family. All right, so Mel Kempf, started his law enforcement career in September 1984, he was hired by Kitsap County as Corrections Deputy. He spent six years with them, and then was hired as Deputy Sheriff, effective June 1st, 1990. So I'll do the math, it's him twenty-six years and one month. He started out on the West End, and worked on the West End for almost ten years. Came to, in fact, I didn't look down here, what did he come back east?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, so seven years, seven years. I did look through his service jacket, and a tremendous number of awards in there, three department commendations, two meritorious service awards, one Medal of Valor, and I'll expand a little bit on that with the award that I've given, but essentially, you know, we trained for this, and it usually doesn't happen, but Deputy Kempf, along with Deputy Edington, went to a routine disturbance, and suddenly they found someone standing with a shotgun, who fired at it. An outstanding response by both the deputies, and neither one of them were seriously injured as a result of it, but only their quick training and skills saved. Let's see, before I give my award, I'm going to make one kind of light comment. One thing that Mel is famous for is his ability to tell it by video. I go back, actually, Mel was somewhat of a mentor to me, when he came back to the east side, or the west side of the county, I worked with him, we were patrol partners, and Mel just had a great way of expressing what was going on out there. And a lot of times, someone would ask his opinion, sometimes they would, but either way, they would get it. And I do recall a lot, I think this is, this was the best of all, but it really shows Mel's quick wit, and his philosophical depth. Mel had responded to, I think it was a vehicle lockout, some Ford distraught mother, a couple of kids that had, were locked in a car, and Mel came to help Mel, and I'm not sure if he either did a slim jim or busted the window, but one way or another, he reunited the kids with mother. And the mother was distraught because she was in the midst of some issues with her boyfriend, I believe, and asked Mel, "Mel, what should I do?" Just all his problems. And Mel said, "Well, for starters, maybe you should stop being in babies with this guy." What was funny about this, though, is that the young lady in question thought about it and said, "You know, I think you're right." Unfortunately, this lady's, this young lady's mother was there and heard it, and so I got the call. I'm lodging that, I'm lighting this, Deputy, I'm not getting fired. Why? And so, we went through, but it was, it was an easy one to handle, because in the end, I asked the mom, "Did your daughter ask Mel what he thought?" "Oh yeah." End of problem. Anyway, I appreciate that, but there is no, there is no more of a community-oriented police officer than Mel Kempf, he's been in the mix. I'm going to have Ron Cameron, Under Sheriff, come up, and he has a brief thing that he would like to read and share, and then I'll get on to the rest of this. Under Sheriff.
You know, it's getting tough, it's tough for me to get here, I've seen all my friends leave, and for some reason, I'm hanging in there, it's getting tougher to ever. We watched Todd, over the last couple of years, we lost Doug, Jeff, Tom, people all different friends, and it's really been tough to see these guys go. About a month ago, I was for sure that Mel was leaving us, I wrote him a note, and I shared it with him, and I'd like to share that note with you, with his permission.
Absolutely.
Hey, full disclosure, I don't often do this to retired people, I did do one for Todd, but I really wanted to read this here. It's truly with the huge amount of regret that I see retired Mel. I've been at this job for over thirty-five years, I've met, worked with a huge variety of law enforcement officers, especially deputies. None possess the high quality of character, energy, and commitment that you have given during your tenure here. Your dedication to this agency for these many years is a testament to that allegiance. Sheriff Benedict believes, and I agree, that by hiring and maintaining top-quality people, the Clowdon County Sheriff's Office succeeds due to the level of competency and the human nature that our deputies all possess. You personify that belief by having that high character, of which I spoke, which has allowed you to serve as a role model for younger deputies to aspire to. You've been an integral part in making our agency the best anywhere. Few people other than maybe Ralph have achieved what you have by excelling as a patrol deputy your entire career. You have demonstrated time and again your high level of confidence in everything you set out to do, whether it was your role as a deputy, an FTO, firearms instructor, or marine deputy. While the selfish side of me doesn't want you to retire, Mel, I very much appreciate your years of exemplary service for their agency, and you certainly deserve to be a deputy of the Culver today. Wherever your path takes, Mel, please enjoy your retirement, and as always, stay safe.
Okay, well, I have an award that I would like to present to Mel. It's the Sheriff's Star, and I'd like to read some of the citation. The Sheriff's Star presented to Mel Kempf, Deputy Sheriff, Clowdon County. Deputy Mel Kempf's twenty-six years of service as a deputy sheriff of the Clowdon County Sheriff's Office have been marked by a deep and lightened dedication to public safety, ethical service, and excellence in day-to-day performance. Deputy Kempf began at the Sheriff's Office in June 1990, and was initially assigned to the West End detachment. Mel spent several years working out of Clowdon Bay Slip Point Detachment, which he called home. By the end of the 1990s, he transferred from the West End to work out of the Ford Angeles and Swim offices, where he served the remainder of his career. Mel served in a number of special assignments for the Sheriff's Office throughout his career. As a field training deputy, he trained many of our young and inexperienced deputy deputies on the intricacies of police. As a marine deputy, he patrolled the waters of Clowdon County and ensured the safety for the boat and truck. Mel is unquestionably one of our finest firearms instructors, I can attest to that. Mel, I think that excelled in every one of his special assignments, but the firearms, he just absolutely excelled, stood out. Wonderful instructor, incredibly competent mechanic, if you will, with firearms for maintenance. I really appreciate that, and for the way I keep him doing that for me, I'm going to talk. Mel has many letters of appreciation sent to us over the years from citizens who appreciated his presence and compassion in their time of need. Mel has been awarded three department commendations, a marksmanship award, two meritorious service awards. In 2003, Mel received the Medal of Valor when he and his partner responded to a disturbance and were met by a gun, or met by a man armed with a shotgun. The man shot at the deputies who stood their ground, returned fire, and neutralized the public safety threat. Thankfully, neither P. Morris or Parker was injured. Deputy Kempf's service and commitment to a safe communities and the highest traditions of the Clowdon County Sheriff's Office, and I take great pride in presenting Deputy Mel Kempf, Sheriff's Star, for twenty-six years of exceptional service and self-sacrifice in the performance of deputies. And Mel. Okay, well, this is one of those times when the retiring member of the department has a microphone, Mel, thank you.
Thank you for all the kind words, and thanks, everybody, for coming. First, I'd like to thank Dispatch for watching over us through the radio. I'd like to thank Corrections for all the hospitality, Support Services for being supportive in just so many roles. You guys are wonderful. Just all the law enforcement family of the peninsula. I'd like to thank Clowdon County and the Sheriff's Office for my career as a deputy. And I'd like to thank Bill and Randy for allowing me to instruct, I enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for here to recognize Iva Burks, for over ten years of service in Clowdon County, so I, this is him. I have a special certificate of appreciation. Stay up here, you're going to get your chance too, and we're going to have some other deputy charities through here today. So Iva was just a few months ahead of me in coming to work for the district, moving here from Louisiana. But I actually met her before I came on board, because we were in the same old company , guys. So I had a little bit of an opportunity to, she was actually the first department head that I actually knew the name of when I was selected back in March of 2006. Well, one of the things that I got to say that gave me a great deal of comfort and peace in dealing with Iva, is that among the eleven people who directly report to me as a group, the most professional and the most dedicated and competent people you've ever asked for, Iva was exemplary in those areas, even though I'm that group. I could always count on her calm demeanor, her no-nonsense attitude, and yet she had compassion also. Basically, it just kind of let me not have to worry about what was going on in health and human services, and I can tell you, when I talk to my fellow administrators, we have a conference every year, and of county administrators, and everybody talks about their issues, I'm telling you, every year, people talk about the problems that are occurring in their counties, in the areas of leadership that I was responsible for, in public health, in human services, and we never really had any of those problems. And there was the odd little personnel thing that Iva and HR would take care of, it would only come to me when they had a solution. But for the most part, her professionalism, her dedication, and her, like I say, no-nonsense attitude, is what I believe is the reason that we have had no problems whatsoever. And as she is, she may be part of her speech, as she is happy to say, has been quoted both in the paper and in the radio, it took two people to replace her. As we had Andy and Kim combining to take over responsibilities that Iva was in charge of. So it's really one of those sad things, as the sheriff said, and I don't have twenty-five years worth, twenty-six years worth of deputy stories, but it really is a sad thing when you, when you work together and you develop the relationships and you rely on somebody the way I and I'm sure everybody else has relied on Iva, you worry about change. But, you know, she's trained her people well, and I think they're ready to take over, and we have a little bit of a month of working with her still here, and that also gives me a great deal of peace. So Iva, thank you very much, I appreciate the ten years we had together and the ten-plus years you were here with the county. So I'm going to turn over to our public health agenda, are you going to come on screen out?
So I'm Jeanette Sterling, and I'm the Chair of the Clowdon County Board of Health. We do things very formally on the Board of Health, so I put proclamation to me for Iva, on behalf of the Board, and it's an honor and pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the protection of the health and safety of the citizens of Clowdon County is critical to their well-being and productivity, and whereas knowledgeable, thoughtful, and dedicated public health leaders are necessary to protect the health and safety of our citizens, and whereas Iva Burks served as the Director of Clowdon County Health and Human Services for ten years, worked proactively and collaboratively to identify and address key public health issues in our county, and whereas Ms. Burks took office shortly before the 2007 recession, as federal and state funding for local programs was lost, and yet those public health needs continued, and has been a skilled administrator and fierce defender of Health and Human Services budget, allowing critical public health activities to stay afloat in our county during difficult times. Whereas Ms. Burks weathered a variety of public health emergencies, including a measles outbreak, avian influenza on a local farm, closures of local beaches on a holiday weekend, and much more, that just being during my shortened tenure. She has been a rock at a time of crisis, rolling in her sleeves to do the necessary work, not just dictating from afar. Ms. Burks has been an accessible leader to her staff, including frontline employees, program managers, and supervisors, making them feel safe, affirmed, and truly supported. She's described by her staff, and these are their words, "She is trustworthy, wise, caring, thoughtful, and always optimistic, intuitive, and warm. She listened attentively to their problems, evaluated fairly, and offered wise and balanced counsel." Whereas Ms. Burks represented Health and Human Services on dozens of committees and subcommittees and work groups, and through her thoughtful and deliberative efforts, reflected well on the agency, commanding the respect of her colleagues and counterparts. Whereas Ms. Burks demonstrated a great sense of humor that could diffuse tense situations yet drive home important points and move public health priorities, not politics, forward. Whereas although it is said that public health is at its best when it is invisible to the public, Ms. Burks has been an outspoken and visible advocate for the protection of the public's health when needed. Whereas Ms. Burks participated in the Board of Health meetings and deliberations, and although not a member of the Board of Health, provided guidance, wisdom, and moments of sanity. Now therefore, the Clowdon County Board of Health proclaims its gratitude for the dedicated work of Iva Burks and her contributions to the health of the people of Clowdon County, and wishes her the best in her retirement. Les bons temps roule. Thank you so much. Okay, I'll try it back to today, just a few words, the former health officer of Clowdon County, Tom Locking, I'd like to say a few words, and the current health officer of Clowdon County, so Tom, one screen now.
Well, I don't have any prepared remarks, actually, but I clung to my policy to never pass up an open mic, so it's just, it's a pleasure to be back, and I think the Board of Health proclamation really summarized the challenges of the last ten years, and it's been a very difficult time for, for public health statewide, the public health system shrunk by about forty percent during that recession, and it's never really recovered from that point, so we're at a point in public health history where we're, we don't have less work, we have more to do about the rest of resources, and Iva really navigated those turbulent times with extraordinary skill, and grace, and perseverance, and I think everyone in this county benefited from that. As many know, I just recently retired after twenty-seven years of service here in Clowdon County, and have, not to a life of leisure, I actually chose the frying pan to the fire method, and now back in clinical work. But during that time here, I, you know, and the reason I wanted this opportunity to come speak today, is just to express my appreciation for Iva, I really could not do what I did here without her support and her determination to hold the line on the budget and keep the services functioning, because as Jeanette said, much of what public health does, is invisible when we're doing it well, but when we're not doing it well, it becomes very visible, and the damages can be extreme. So I think a lot of people don't really understand and appreciate what a dedicated crew we have here in Clowdon County, and how important that is to the health of everyone. So thank you very much, Iva, for your ten years of service, and if you're looking for some work in the clinical sector, maybe we can buy something for you to do.
So I only, I'll be very brief, I've only been in the health officer job for about eight months, but Iva has been just a wonderful mentor. It's a, it's a lot, it's quite a bit different job than most physicians are used to, and so it's been a learning experience, and she's really been with me along. I've been telling her, I think, I think, I'm not guaranteeing, but I think either her husband Edgar is going to kick her out of the house, or she's going to get so bored that, I'm hoping that eventually, we're going to get her continuing to work on Clowdon County health issues and public health in our county, but probably this time for.
Thank you for the very kind words and thoughts. My ten years with Clowdon County, ten plus years, I've worked with two county administrators, six county commissioners, and three health officers, all of which have been passionate about various issues and very dedicated, and I consider that a wonderful working environment. As I end this week, I will be a few weeks short of forty-four years of public service at the city, state, and county level, and I consider that a rare privilege to have worked for the public that long. the public that long and to have always liked my job. My husband, of almost 44 years, is out of town, so he is not here today, but he will be here Thursday for my retirement cake that my current health officer has promised not to throw on the floor, because he's a little bit of a food Nazi. And I want to assure the new director, Director Rastad, one of the last things I have done, my subject is up to date, so I'm leaving good step up. My 10 years has gone very fast, and I think that's because of the very good staff that Health and Human Services has. I could not accomplish what I accomplished with health. So thank you, staff, thank you, commissioners, thank you, Jill.
From the board, Chris Kirk, Tom Hurren. I would like to announce that all of the sheriff's personnel and the IRAs as well as the other belts is welcome to come down to EOC. We've got a cake and refreshments in all the zones, but we're going to duck out. Apparently, the health officer's right, by the way. You're on the three tiers.
Sure. Last week, I attended the Clough Transit Board meeting, and one of our local Clough Transit drivers, David Larrabee, placed in the top 10 International Bus Driver Rodeo. And that's, not only is that fun, but that's, helps to underscore Clough Transit's commitment to, to skill improvement and safe driving. So that's kind of the, also, just a quick update, the, I mentioned a month or so ago that the NOPRC and D was working on engaging a consultant to assist with completion of the SENS, which is our regional economic development strategy. That consultant has been engaged, and we expect the SENS to be updated and complete by September. That's all I've got today.
There's an update for you on legislative priorities from the Washington State Association of Counties. They've spent a fair amount of time, had a retreat earlier this year, and summarized four key points that they want to work on, and I'll share those with you. First deals with property tax revenue growth. The proposal is to try to replace the 1% cap on property tax growth with a new cap that tracks with inflation and population growth with a new cap of 5%. The second item that they're working on, this is actually a big deal among all of the counties, so protecting the Public Records Act from abuse. And so the proposal is to enact a bill to treat tax local government from harassing requesters. It's an extremely expensive issue, especially for small counties. And then the last item is providing adequate funding for indigent defense services by securing legislative funding for state mandated indigent defense services. Here in Clough County, we spend a million dollars a year on that. It's really decisions that have been made and handed to us, rather than, here's the decision, and here's also the funding. So that's what the Washington Association of Counties is currently working on. And the second thought I offer is, I did have a chance to attend the Jimmer Commerce Meeting when Commissioner Ozias spoke. One of the things that you said that really resonated with me, Mark, is that, you know, this, this board has worked really hard to collaborate with each other, and that's a value system that we intend to work on in the future. A lot of people come up to me afterwards and comment, you know what, I've seen, I've seen the difference. So I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
I attended the Washington Association of Prosecute Attorneys Annual Conference last week, and so discussed a number of emerging issues confronting county governments that have legal overcomes to them. Many of the topics raised, I think, consisted with what may have been discussed at Waco, stemmed from state mandated functions that are being passed down to counties without a corresponding revenue stream to oversee the work. And so different prosecutors and other representatives, including the State Attorney General, for example, U.S. attorneys, were there talking about possible funding issues and fixes. And so interesting to hear what's underfoot. Washington ultimately is having a significant problem with heroin. This is a national epidemic which is underscored. Each of the 39 counties is dealing with this issue, and frankly, if you do a Google search for heroin epidemic, what you're going to discover is articles from the extreme West Coast to the extreme East Coast and everything in between. So these are societal problems that present significant problems and no easy solutions. So good progress. Brought the substance back to the deputies in your prosecutor's office, and, you know, we're going to continue to fight the good fight.
Just a quick, I just want to let Iva know what a pleasure it has been working with you for 20 years, and I wish you all the best. But the thing I'm wondering most is who's going to be providing the king cake, Mardi Gras.
I don't know if they'll have a Mardi Gras party that's up to anyone.
That would be really nice to know, so I can plan for that. You can start planning there. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Only we had some other staff members who are from the South.
Okay, contracts and agreements. I N 2A is an agreement with David A. Siebel Act and Chrissy N. R. Siebel Act to purchase plan, to resolve pending litigation, and expand the public's access and use.
All right. I ask that this remain on the agenda today because it requires a little further discussion, in my judgment, after our work session yesterday. And I would just like to try and, and help set the stage and perhaps further explain a little bit where, where we're at here, because I think it's important for the public to understand this as best as possible. The mediated settlement that this, this issue is part and parcel of is something, is a strategy that your county leadership team, all three elected commissioners, the Director of Community Development, and others have been pursuing for a number of months now. And, you know, we, we have done our best to weigh the benefits versus the potential liabilities of various courses of action. The initial lawsuit that was highlighted this morning is certainly one piece of that, but it's not the only piece. And all along the way, the, those of us who have been tasked with making decisions like this determined that engaging in a mediated settlement, or at least attempting to do so, was the best course of action for us to take. And, and if any of, you know, any of the other participants would like to, to comment further on that, then, you know, certainly, please feel free. We reached an agreement during mediation, and what we're talking about now is how to fund our portion of the settlement. The, you know, and I'm sure that all of us, just as with any, any difficult or other decision that we make, will look back and hope that we have made the right decision. And I hope, and I believe, that, that the decision to arrive at a mediated settlement is the correct decision for the organization and for taxpayers. In terms of, of funding our portion of the settlement, that's really what we're talking about now. And there are a couple of different ways that, that, that we could go about this. The most straightforward way would be to utilize funds that have already been set aside for contingency, contingencies, such as this. There are, you know, here we're talking about a land purchase. There are more than sufficient funds in our, our risk management set aside for unanticipated, unanticipated issues that might come up to, to handle this land purchase. But the Board of Commissioners, during our last executive session, decided that we wanted to engage in as open and public a process as possible, which is why we determined that it would be a better route to hold a budget emergency here, which, as was already discussed this morning, has been scheduled for the 5th of July. Yesterday, we, we hoped to buy ourselves a little bit more time to have a more robust, a more robust period of time in which to, to engage public input. Unfortunately, the other parties to the mediation and to the settlement were not interested in, in extending that time period. So where we find ourselves now is we have committed to, to a settlement, and it's our job to, to pursue that. So the way I see it, we have two courses of action that will allow us to do this at this point, and I just wanted to invite my fellow commissioners to, to, you know, to volunteer their, their opinion as to what would be the best way to go, and/or perhaps there's another alternative that I haven't thought of yet. But as I understand it, we have until July 15th to, to meet our terms of the agreement. We can either go ahead with the path that we had originally discussed, temporarily revised yesterday, which is to hold a budget hearing, oh, excuse me, to hold a budget emergency hearing on July 5th. That would provide the public with as much opportunity as we are able to provide in order to have input on this, or we can, we can utilize a budget modification which, which would involve less public input. It would perhaps be more straightforward. But either way, I, I think that it is important that we live up to our end of the agreement. I think if we were to, to lose this mediated settlement, just as we have determined up until now that our potential liability would be sufficient that, as distasteful as it may seem, that this was, this was the proper and best solution, I, I think that it would be a shame to lose that opportunity. So since the, the other participants in the mediation were unwilling to extend the deadline, which, which I see when it was originally set was a reasonable deadline, I think it's important that we decide how to move forward such that, such that we can live up to our obligation. And I wanted to briefly acknowledge both of the comments that the treasurer made this morning, because they're, they're important. And the first had to do with whether, whether we've seen and read the initial complaint that was the, you know, sort of at the heart of, of this issue. I can only speak for myself and say that I have read it, but it's important for the public to understand that this lawsuit is not the only issue that, that is being resolved or that would be resolved as a result of this mediated settlement. And in fact, I think it would be accurate to say that it's perhaps not even the main And the, the other comment having to do with, with motivations perhaps for filing this lawsuit, I would like to say that from everything that I know about, about this situation, that what we're talking about here is a systemic failure. There are a number of, of individuals well-intentioned over the course of time that have, that have made decisions that have led us to be where we are now. And as far as I'm concerned, any attempt to, to characterize what we're doing as, as a way to cover, well, cover tracks or whatnot is just not true. And so I, I appreciate very much that concern. I know that the public shares those and other concerns, and as we move forward with this, I will continue to do everything that I am legally able to, to help members of the public, staff, and others understand why we've made the decision that we have. So with that, I guess I'd just love to see what, what your thoughts are.
Appreciate it. I recommend that we proceed with the transaction. We have been negotiating the deal for quite a while. We did develop a solution that works all the way around, and the cost associated with missing the deadline to perform as we said we would is that the settlement that we've established is now, you know, and we begin the process of, you know, something that I would like people to think about is that the transaction were involved and doesn't, doesn't involve the acquisition of a piece of real estate. But, and there's a lot of discussion about, you know, what is the real estate worth and what are those components to the settlement? We're not buying real estate. We are settling a lawsuit. You know, I want to stress that. I want people to understand that in stateless, a lot of work, and to a point with a creative solution that we jeopardize if we don't proceed with this. Based on recent communications, I think that there's a strong probability that we're dealing with somebody that's going to back out, and I would hate to see that. I really would. And to rid of it is this issue with regard to records retention, and we're not alone. I mentioned the priorities that the Washington Association of Counties have, including records management. It's killing small counties and us, I mean, it takes a lot of staff. There's a meeting this scheduled on Thursday with the electives and the department heads to discuss what can we do in terms of revision to our records system, how we respond to information requests, and that's staff in the right direction. In addition, in this case, we need to recognize the opportunity for improvement. I, for one, am not interested in having a lot of extra work handed to people. That's why I like to listen to the staff about how can we implement this in a manner that protects the county and doesn't cause an enormous additional workload for the staff. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I'm looking forward to that meeting. And so that, the idea of how to proceed relative to the budget emergency versus reaching into existing accounts, to me, it's a bit of an academic. existing accounts, to me, it's a bit of an academic exercise. You know, I'm happy to get your recommendation on it, Jim. Regardless of which funding mechanism we use, and we'll use the proper, nobody does. I like the fact that we're going to have a meeting where people can ask, ask the question, what is occurring here and get an answer. And so whether you call it like an emergency or just discussion on the transaction, I'm open. But I think, Jim, the finding that exists already would put us in a situation where we do not need a budget emergency. If you mind your argument.
For the first segment of the settlement, that would be true, yes. We can pay a dollar claim settlement that's already has budget authority enough to pay it.
Okay. And then the second part of it is, there's another option in terms of the reserve or or risk management.
Yes. And if you ask my opinion, I'm mindful of the fact that the, the risk reserve itself, rather than the general fund reserve, has $1.243 million and it, and could easily handle a budget emergency transfer from its reserve to its payment plan of the additional $200,000 that would be necessary.
So I'm open to which method we can work with. I just want transparency. I don't want anybody to know as we're moving numbers around, but those numbers are what they mean. So I'm a little bit indifferent as to the vehicle we use to find this, but I do think it's critical if you have questions about what is occurring, that they get a chance to have those questions answered. And, and I really do believe, especially when some of the meetings I've had with WAC and then Olympia next winter, next, next Thursday. And this is a hot topic, record retention and how you actually respond to information requests is killing, I mean, really killing smaller counties because they don't have the staff for it, they don't have the money to put on additional staff, and all they get is more proposals to create a lineup in the future. We can address this again proactively. So my recommendation on this is that we do proceed and with terms of the action today, I, I would recommend that we do proceed with the agreement with the CILAX to purchase the land that's involved in this transaction. I'm interested in what your thoughts are on this, this whole line.
What are your thoughts? The prospect of your role, given our, our best advice before in session. And so my comment would be that I believe that the three of you know more about the facts and circumstances surrounding the lawsuit that can be easily relayed to the public, certainly in a, in a short sound bite. This is a, a case involving a history that runs back to the late 1990s and spans a period of time in which different electives had assumed office, taken different courses of action. Ultimately, we have comparative situation. And from a, I suppose what I'd say is from a, you know, 100,000-foot view perspective, you know, this lawsuit aside, the, the business of government requires its leaders to make difficult decisions. I think that this is one such occasion and that frankly, you're facing a bit of a Hobson's choice and you could take action and be criticized for doing so. And I think if you didn't act, you will also be criticized or inaction. Ultimately, what I would urge is that the board by its, its, its knowledge, its wisdom, and make a decision that is in the best interest of the organization, recognizing that it's the county that is the holder of public funds. This suit does involve public records claims, which are dangerous for public agencies. I think Commissioner Page has heard that loud and clear. We've been preaching that message for quite some time. Hopefully there'll be legislative reform at some point in time. It's probably going to take some smaller municipal agencies going bankrupt before we see that happen, is my personal belief. Other than that, it's a, it's a tough decision. It's the board's to make. And again, we've given our, our very best advice and are always glad to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any other things to add?
Well, I thank Commissioner Ozawa and Commissioner Page very much for this matter because I inherited 17 years of commendable females, all kind of he said, she said, this said, everybody said. And I would really like the opportunity to start and say today was how much to deal with them, um, issues that he and I may have, which I think that we can help through because we got to this point. So I think we can, it can be a positive step from this point on. So I really appreciate John continuing to have the courage to start it. So thank you very much.
Again, like yesterday, I strongly caution the board not to take action today. And I'll add a couple of extra comments. It would appear that new information came in yesterday after the board agreed to postpone this matter. Because of my schedule, I was out of the county from 1:00 until almost midnight last night, and I was up early for a business association meeting. So literally I have not looked at my email since I left the courthouse yesterday. No, that's not your issue. It would appear that you guys were partying to some conversations and some documentation that I have known. So I'm not prepared to make any kind of decision today because I've not seen all the information that's come in. I didn't know most of what you guys are talking about is not what was discussed yesterday as far as new information, people agreeing or not agreeing. So for the reasons issued yesterday, that this is a matter that should be, I, I don't see where the funds would be coming from. I don't believe that we want to go down the road of just approving the contracts to spend $300,000 and figuring out after the fact to make, to move money around. That would be in the public's interest. But if you two feel like you have the information and you need to make a decision and you feel it's in the best, I'm, I'm just one, I'll go now, you guys can move forward. But if I don't know the information you guys are working on, pretty difficult to think that anybody in the public knows. So that's, I mean, it could be they were reading my email yesterday, but I don't believe any emails are human and are publicly released. So at the very least, I'd ask to at least take a recess so I can go read whatever and have the same information that you guys have. But I just don't think, yesterday was discussed, we decided to postpone it, we haven't had the public hearing yet, haven't had any public process yet. This has just dumped almost $300,000. And the last thing, if you guys are talking about a lawsuit with Lang, but this is an agreement with another group of families, so I don't, I think there's moving parts that aren't all together that, that was why I was thinking if we had more work sessions, we brought all the settlement offers to the table with the other parties because, and again, I don't know what was said in the emails that you guys saw yesterday. Jim mentioned that they're emailing aside because I walked into the meeting today. So at the very least, before I talk too much more, we could take a recess so I could go read my email and figure out what it is you guys are operating on. Or if you want to move forward today, you can. That's, that's kind of, I'm, so I'm at a real huge disadvantage because of my schedule yesterday.
I would say the only information that's changed is that the other parties who agreed to the settlement along with, with the county were not willing to extend, extend the date. So there's no difference among the parties, there's no different terms than what has been previously discussed and, and collectively agreed upon. I, I would be certainly happy to take a short recess and, but, but I, I will reinforce that I think that it's important that we not lose the opportunity that we have achieved here in this mediated settlement. And unfortunately, we are on a timeline. And if we want to have the most transparent process possible, that would be holding an emergency budget hearing on July 5th as previously scheduled. And again, that, you know, I, I think it would have, for all the reasons that we talked about yesterday, that's, you know, after a holiday, et cetera, that is a, that is a compressed timeline. But the, you know, where, where we have to deal with reality. And reality is, is that we agreed to a settlement, we agreed to a date, and a, holding a, a budget emergency hearing on July 5th would be the most public way that we can reach this decision in the timeframe, in, in the timeframe that exists. So.
I think the records show that after executive session, the board agreed to call a public hearing. And I think, I don't believe the board ever agreed to a date. So I'll, I'll just say that, that that was not put on the record, there's no public record of a board agreeing. Like any other real estate transactions, both parties have to have time to read the documents, figure out what's before them. I'm, I'm sitting here saying, I don't have all the information. I thought yesterday when I left, I thought we would have time, and we've got more time to look at it. So this arbitrary date that appears to have popped up is in fact very arbitrary, not part of the public record.
If I can just.
But again, I'm really, it is really unfair that I'm being peppered to people who have a lot of information. So honestly.
Commissioner Chapman, you've been building this timeline longer than I can.
I really haven't.
Yes, you have. Yes, you have.
I'm sorry, I just want my people to interject and offer just a few answers to, because I, it's tricky enough to try to speak to the, I'm, the commissioners. At the conclusion of yesterday's public work session, where we engaged in some very constructive dialogue about the proposed land purchase agreement, it was the direction from this body to ask the Wisconsin Department of Justice to make two inquiries to parties. The first of which was if they had any concern in releasing the draft agreement, which was executed the prior agreement with a course of mediation on May 16, 2016. And with the hope that if they had no concerns, that that would help explain how some of these parts are, are moving, recognizing that based on the nature of the agreement, we're kind of finding ourselves in a position where we need to be doing this in stages. And after speaking, we do have the ability to make that agreement available, which will help inform the public as to how to the discrete aspects of these parts. It is in that agreement that was reached on by 16 and then brought back to the board through the course, or through the client groups in executive session, that captures the, the deadline. And that deadline is, you know, in an effort to realize a settlement consistent with that which was discussed, that needed to be done within 60 days of the media, the, the draft agreements. So that's the, the deadline that we've been working up against. And that was the second request from this body to make inquiries as to would the parties be willing to engage in a, in an extension just to slow things down a little bit. And it's that inquiry that we made. And, you know, for the, for whatever reasons, the parties involved in this negotiated agreement, given the length of time and the amount of energies that they've expended, at this, at this point, we don't have the assurance that they, we can seek exception extensions. So really time is at the essence of this.
All parties, all parties turned down their requests so that board could have a public hearing next week and just go through public, all parties turned down now?
Commissioner, I, I actually think the recess idea is, I think is a good one because ultimately, it's not fair to ask you to, to chime in with informed comments when you haven't seen the response.
Yeah.
And so I think that's, that's a fair request. My recommendation is that we take a few minutes, allow for Commissioner Chapman to catch up on this email. I think what Brian is reflecting is that we made the outreach requested yesterday and the answer from one of the parties has sent her email is, no, I'm not willing to extend. The other party might be slightly more valuable. But it's best, I think, if you can do your emails on your own, under the circumstances. And, you know, there shouldn't be a shot down decision by any stretch of the imagination. Take them five minutes or so, which is probably a, a good idea.
I really appreciate that, our interview, my previous. Is this the email that shot through the system just this morning? I don't know, five minutes, you know?
Maybe one. There's three emails. I'll just go through the agenda, I have to go over the sales. Okay, item 2B is an agreement with the city of Bainbridge to allow each agency to organize the other's vendor agreement as was discussed in work session on June 20th.
Move to approve the agreement with the city of Bainbridge.
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 2C is a personal services agreement with K&amp;H Printers for printing and mailing 2016 primary election ballots as was discussed in work session on yesterday.
Move to authorize the chair to sign a special use permit. Oops, sorry, wrong one. I move to approve the personal services agreement with K&amp;H Printers for printing and mailing of the 2016 primary election ballots.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 2D is a special use permit with the United States Forest Service for construction, maintenance and operation of segment number seven of the Olympic Discovery Trail on forest service lands, all as discussed in work session on June 20th.
All right. Now I move to authorize the chair to sign a special use permit with Forest Service.
Second. Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 2E is in agreement with Shannon and Wilson Inc. for engineering design services for the design phase of the Lower Dungeness Floodplain Restoration Project, all as was discussed in work session on, yesterday.
Move to approve the agreement with Shannon and Wilson Inc.
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. And item 2F is a personal services agreement with Sound Law Center for hearing examiner services of Andrew Reeves, as was discussed several times actually in work session.
Move to approve the three-year contract with Sound Law Center.
Second. Second. Any questions, comments?
Just a short comment. I, again, would like to publicly thank all of the citizen volunteers who took time to help us with, with this decision-making process. And I'm looking forward to the next three years and your feedback here, Alan. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. It's our board. Item 3A is a notice of call for bids to be received no later than 10:00 AM July 12, 2016 for janitorial services for the Clowton County Health Department, as was discussed in work session on June 20th.
Move to proceed with the notice of call for bids.
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 3B is a notice of call for bids to be received no later than 10:00 AM July 26, 2016 for the Clowton County Third Street Building Level Two remodel, as was discussed in work session June 20th.
Move to proceed with the notice of call for bids, and this is for the Third Street Building Level Two remodel.
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 4A is a notice of hearing to be held at 10:30 AM July 12 for proposed sale of surplus property, Sheriff's Office Glock 2240 Smith &amp; Western Pistol with three magazines, all as was discussed in work session on June 20th.
Move to approve the notice for hearing to be held at 10:30 AM on July 12 for the proposed sale of surplus property.
Second. Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 4B is a resolution continuing the relationships with the Washington County's Risk Pool and the related appointments and designations.
Move to approve the resolution continuing relationships with the Washington County's Risk Pool.
Aye. Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget?
Budget. Item 5A is approval of budget modifications for the week of June 13.
Move to approve budget modifications for the week of June 13.
Second. Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Item 5B is a resolution adopting the following supplemental appropriation under developmental disabilities, receive additional monies from the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services in the amount of $44,370.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any carries? So, any development, public works, public hearings, public comments, any of the public wishes, any comment on the items?
Ken.
I want to give you another one. So when I saw the item around the Clonan Bay property on the agenda when I was on the internet this weekend, I come by surprise, I'm a regular attending these meetings, and so I went to work back and handled it over. And of course, I don't have the background in the arrangement, but it's a lot of money. And the budget's a bit stressed, it hasn't been stressed for a while, we still have some revenue. And legal issues, I'm sure, not entering to the bridge today. But just a little bit of money. The other item is, I listened to the discussion on Triad P Road again, and I've driven that road a couple of times here lately, and I've driven it for more than 50 years. So, you know, it's a horse road, steep, and I have concerns about putting that on the seat. I think that it's a big piece of business. Any other questions, comments? I think I have to do it. So there's no objection, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and take a discussion. Any objections?
Here's this. Oh, no, this is the initial lawsuit.
This is the initial lawsuit. Black on record, I appreciate it. So, there were some emails that came in, I think, both yesterday and this morning. So, once again, I come back to, so the steeplex have agreed at one time, in their email. Now I'm really confused.
Yes, so I can speak to that. The steeplex are not the plaintiffs in this case. The settlement agreement is between county and the plaintiffs, which are Scott and Elizabeth Lang. It's that agreement that imposes the timeframe. And when we really are in the need to get the extension of time, the primary individual that we need to be dealing with is the Langs, because they're the ones that are, you know, that we need to execute this agreement with. So if they're unable to give us an extension of time for whatever reason, because, you know, they need closure, they need to be able to move forward, you know, that's really the one that's shaping the discussion. What's more is the email that you're referencing is a communication where actually there needs to be allegation to the client. So while there's a possibility of an extension forthcoming, we don't have definite assurance. So because the clock continues to tick...